Welcome to the August sixteenth Town Council meeting. We'll begin with the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Chairman, before you sack, somebody make a motion to see the other minutes in the non-public session.
Some moved.
Second.
Counselor Burns.
Aye.
Counselor Finch.
Aye.
Counselor Cast.
Aye.
Counselor Bowden.
Aye.
Counselor Weinstein.
Aye.
Counselor Pike.
Aye.
Motion passes six-zero.
And let me also mention that Counselor Thompson is, has an excused absence tonight. And with that, we'll open the public forum if there's any members of the public who would like to make comments. Seeing none, I'll close the public forum at seven oh six. And we'll open a public hearing on Resolution twenty seventeen eighteen dash four, amending the cable franchise agreement with Comcast Maine, New Hampshire for a five-year extension.
You want it? Yep.
Hi, good evening. My name's Kate Miller. I'm with Donahue, Tucker and Chandello as the Town Council. Several years ago, I worked with an earlier Town Council and members of a cable committee to do a very extended and lengthy cable franchise renewal with Comcast. The result of that was a fairly robust franchise agreement, which is now the franchise agreement in place for the town. As many of you know from the materials we've sent and previous briefings, towns don't have unlimited control over what to negotiate for in a cable franchise agreement. The deck is pretty heavily stacked in favor of the existing cable operator. No franchise in New Hampshire can be an exclusive franchise, so the town of New Market would be thrilled if another cable operator wanted to come in and compete with Comcast. That has happened in very few communities of this size. In New Hampshire, the telephone company TDS, which has some communities a little north of here in the Lakes Region, they have been putting out a fiber product and offering a video service in competition with the existing cable operator. But it's a gamble, and few telephone companies have really wanted to do that. Verizon made noise about wanting to do it in two thousand and six before it pulled out of the state altogether, and then it shut down that idea. It's very expensive. And one of the challenges for cable companies to compete with an existing cable operator is the real estate that they need to locate on are the telephone poles primarily, and those are getting very crowded. So back in the eighties when the first cable companies came in, lots of room. The idea was there'd be plenty of competition, lots of small cable companies would compete for business. What has happened over the years is an aggregation of companies into larger and larger companies, and essentially it's economically not feasible for a competitor to come in and try to unseat an existing cable provider and draw customers away. So we've ended up with kind of an economic monopoly in most communities in New Hampshire and across the country. And the cable laws essentially say you can't kick out the existing cable operator unless they're either not in compliance with the current franchise agreement, or they do not provide a proposal that's reasonable for renewal of the franchise agreement. Having done a fairly lengthy negotiation and renewal the last time around, which is pretty costly, I took a hard look at the existing agreement. We did some audit questions to Comcast, which the town officials also reviewed and provided responses to, to make sure that there were no elements of the current franchise that Comcast is currently not meeting. So we've kind of done our due diligence to make sure Comcast is in compliance with the current franchise agreement. At this point, there isn't really anything I can recommend to gain from the existing franchise agreement in terms of an improvement, with the exception of one tweak to the language having to do with taxation of Comcast's use of the public right-of-way. Comcast has agreed to that. The easiest thing, the least expensive thing, the most expeditious thing is to do an amendment to the current franchise and extend it out for a number of years. The renewal period for discussing renewal of a franchise with Comcast is three years. Generally, I don't recommend you do a renewal for less than a three-to-five-year period, or you're right back in discussions with Comcast again. At this point, Comcast's business model, although it includes voice and internet service and video through its cable TV services, most of their revenue is shifting more towards the internet side of their business, over which unfortunately, the franchising authorities in towns and cities have no control. So the Town Council is the franchise authority for the cable TV part of Comcast's business, and the law says if they want to provide cable TV services, they've got to get a franchise from you in order to do that. But over the years, I anticipate more and more of their income is going to be coming from the internet side of their business. Having a franchise that keeps them on the hook for providing the same level of services that they've been providing going forward is probably more in the town's interest at this point, to essentially hold Comcast to not reduce the services that it's providing at this point. So I see there's not a lot to be gained. It would be a costly negotiation. I think the most efficacious approach is what we proposed, which is a small change and then extend the term out. I'm happy to answer any questions that people have about the process or the options.
Just to add on, that we already are getting everything, or have the opportunity to get everything that we could get from Comcast. We have the ability to have two channels. We have one. We just don't have the need for a second channel at this point in time. We charge five percent for the franchise fee. We charge that to Comcast, but as everybody in this room knows, you see it on your bill. It says, please thank the town of New Market for charging the franchise fee to us. We can't go any higher than that.
Right.
They have built everywhere they can in town, so it's not like when franchise agreements first came out, a lot of communities didn't have cable throughout the community. Well, you really can't find one in the greatest seacoast area that has that. So there's really not a lot of other things that we can negotiate in a franchise agreement with Comcast. Kate said that to get another company in, to take one, you know, about ten years ago, everybody was saying, well, let's get another company in. Well, that would take the municipality coming in and buying the infrastructure, and then maintaining the infrastructure and having somebody else do it, and that would also require Comcast to agree to sell it. I remember the Verizon situation, because as I said the story earlier to another counselor, I was driving to Kate's office to begin negotiation for Epping on a Fios agreement, and we got a call saying they backed out because they were pulling out of New Hampshire. The new company that is, that has bought Fairpoint does have cable in other parts of the country, so that may be interested, but I don't see it happening within a year or two.
I think that's right.
Yeah, so it's going to be a while. So this is sort of a, and you're hearing it also in the market in general. People are getting away from cable. They're going to streaming. Everybody's got an Apple TV or some of those.
Cable television, yes.
Yeah, yeah, and that's it. What they're going with are the apps on their, on their streaming devices that have HBO and what they're based, what they were getting on cable. So the internet business is picking up with them. So there's not a lot we can do with the agreement.
So I guess I should ask, is there any other members of the public that want to comment on this? Because we're, councilors are supposed to ask our questions.
That's exactly.
Yeah.
Yep.
And if it's, if you want to have, to take it out of order, so the Attorney Miller could go home.
Let me just ask, is there anybody else from the public that is here to discuss the cable agreement? Because if not, we'll close the public hearing and go directly to discussion of the franchise agreement.
Do you need a motion to accept Resolution twenty seventeen eighteen dash four, amending cable franchise agreement with Comcast Maine, New Hampshire for five-year extension?
Somebody would want to make that motion?
Some moved.
Second.
Okay, I wonder if I could begin the discussion. Counselor Weinstein.
It's just really more of a comment, because we did, at least I had gotten at least one email from a resident here in town who was frustrated with their service. And this really, there's nothing that we can do with this agreement to fix that customer service issue. I just kind of want to.
Yep, I'm happy to respond to that. So I would say there are two things. One thing to know is that it's not great, but already in the current franchise agreement, I think it's one of the exhibits to the franchise, and it's referenced in Section seven, are the FCC's customer service requirements. So the FCC has essentially a standard set of requirements, which I don't believe New Market had adopted prior to the current franchise. They are better than what individual communities can negotiate on their own. And short of being a very large community, New York City or something like that, it's very hard to negotiate anything better than this standard. They're a national company. They have national call centers. They want the same rules to apply to everything, basically. I don't say that they're great, and most people are frustrated with trying to get help, whether it's with resetting things, or through their apps, or service calls to their home. What I think is the real solution, and the Town Administrator referenced it, is people, I think going forward, are going to be voting with their dollars and their feet, and bypassing the cable company for a lot of their entertainment, and going to other types of services that are easier, less costly, more responsive to customer needs. Anytime you have an economic monopoly, essentially one company that provides these services and really isn't subject to a lot of competition, that company tends to not be very responsive to customers. As people are leaving traditional cable and getting their video content from other places, I don't expect Comcast is going to change that a whole lot, but I think people will find better service in other places. So essentially, even though we don't have cable TV competition, there's a lot of other video content that's out there, and people may be moving away. I think until we get, you know, easy to get some of the bigger sports franchises in other ways, and that is starting to happen, people are probably going to be staying with their cable packages for a while. But I think over the next five years or so, we're going to see some big changes. So the answer is sadly, we're not able to negotiate anything stronger. We do have the standard national service requirements, and I'd recommend people, you know, think about whether they want to keep paying for those big, expensive cable packages going forward.
Counselor Bowden?
I'm sorry. Is there, I've heard other people ask the same question, but is there a chance to get Channel thirteen on demand?
We've been talking with them to have it on demand. The only places I've seen that has their local channel on demand at this point in time around here is the city of Boston. I think that goes to the size of the community versus.
Flexity, I guess.
Yeah, it's difficult.
Question. Does New Market still have a portal for streaming through the website?
We do.
Okay. That can sometimes provide some of the same service in terms of people being able to pick up things not necessarily on a particular schedule. And many communities are going to that kind of dual platform for providing information about town events and board meetings. Some people find it easier to use cable TV. It's something they're used to. Other people are finding internet is easier. Some people do both. Having both options, I think, is a great service to folks in the town because they can pick whichever is easier. Comcast is unbelievably rigid about what it will do in communities. And I've heard a lot of folks also asking for HD for their local channels. The only place locally that I've seen that is in Vermont, where I think they negotiate their franchises at the state level. So the state negotiates for all the communities and clearly has more leverage than individual towns. And they are going to be getting HD. In the seacoast, what we've been told, and many communities have asked about this, is nobody gets it until Comcast decides that everybody gets it, and they haven't decided that yet. So it may come in the future, and sadly, I think the cable company starves what is one of their distinguishing products, which is the local access channels. You can't get that on satellite. You know, the only place you can get those kinds of programs are through the cable TV. But they tend to not really support that programming to make it of the same quality on demand or HD as other cable programming is.
And that was one of the big things, too, that you, you heard that a lot when HD became much, so much more prevalent, was that people would be flipping through the channels and see the local channel, then start watching it. Well, it's not in the HD channels.
Right.
So you're not going to see it unless you know to switch it over to local.
Yeah, yeah.
So, see no other questions? Shall we have a vote?
Counselor Burns.
Aye.
Counselor Finch.
Aye.
Counselor Cast.
Aye.
Counselor Bowden.
Aye.
Counselor Weinstein.
Aye.
Counselor Pike.
Aye.
Motion passes six-zero.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. And I'll just say for the record that I, I mean, I have had levels of rage against Comcast in the past that led my family to fear for my circulatory system. But I think they've actually, for me at least, just maybe for me, I've, the last year or two, I've had some people that really helped me with some sort of deep problems in my wiring, and I've had better success with them. I feel better about Comcast than I used to.
Thank you.
Okay. The acceptance of minutes from the July nineteenth, twenty seventeen, regular meeting minutes. I have a motion to approve those minutes, please.
I got a motion by Counselor Bowden.
Oh, second then.
Okay.
Really minor, but on line three thirty, if you look it up, it says Maine is misspelled.
Is that all I have on line four pages?
Well, I wrote it down for.
Which number?
Three thirty, line three thirty. If you look it up, it says Maine, New Hampshire. I think it's the Comcast cable.
It is, yeah.
And it's, and it's just spelled M-A-I-N on that, a bit of M-I-N-E.
Yep. That's all we've got there. Counselor Burns.
Aye.
Counselor Finch.
Abstain.
Counselor Cast.
Aye.
Counselor Bowden.
Aye.
Counselor Weinstein.
Aye.
Counselor Pike.
Aye.
Motion passes five-zero to one.
Could I have a motion to accept the July nineteenth, non-public meeting minutes?
Second.
Any, any comments, corrections from the non-public? If you can't do it here, but if there are none, we can go ahead and call it all, please.
Counselor Burns.
Abstain.
Counselor Finch.
Abstain.
Counselor Cast.
Aye.
Counselor Bowden.
Aye.
Counselor Weinstein.
Aye.
Counselor Pike.
Aye.
Motion passes four, zero to two.
Okay, report of the Town Administrator.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. In my unwritten report, I want to start out by commending the New Market Police, New Market ASAP, for a very successful New Market night out this past Saturday. I was only able to attend for a short time because of a family commitment, but I got there probably about six o'clock, and it was very busy. I mean, it was a lot of people there, and there was a lot of excitement, and it was just a great chance to see the community, meet the fire and rescue, and police personnel, and just to have a nice Saturday night out. I was also very excited to hear about how they want to change it and improve it for next year. So I just want to really commend all of them for their hard work, thank all the businesses from downtown that came, came down, set up stands, and sold their food, as well as all the donations that the group received to do this. They received enough donations that they have funds available for next year. So I just want to really take that opportunity, commend them all for all their hard work. The next item is that the town has received communications from the members of the public regarding Heron Point Sanctuary, and it being gated now. First, I want to start off by this conversation by saying that while it is gated, it is open to the public, but only at this point in time by foot access. It's not closed. The normal rules of being open from dawn till dusk are still in place. It's just that vehicle access is limited. The Heron Point Sanctuary had been ungated for well over ten years from talking with the Chief of Police with minimal issues. Earlier this year, the Heron Point Estates Homeowners Associate Cooperative, through their legal counsel, contacted the town with a complaint of the people in the park after dusk. We did not want to close the park at that time, nor do we want to close it now. To address this, the cooperative's attorney in the town agreed to increase police patrols and encourage the neighbors to call the police if they saw people in the park after dusk. We can't be there all the time with somebody, so we need people to tell us that they're in there. We did increase patrols, and we only received one phone call during, since that time, about somebody in the park after hours. We thought it was actually going quite well, since we didn't hear anything. The town received notice in June from the Board of Directors Attorney again to lock the gate on a permanent basis if we cannot assure that the gate would be locked nightly at dusk. After discussions with our legal counsel and with their attorney, we cannot assume the liability put forward by the Board of Directors that it would be locked nightly at dusk by either the New Market Police Department or the Conservation Commission. If the police are dealing with another issue in the community, they will not be leaving that issue to go and lock the gate at Heron Point. Nor could we take the, make the responsibility of Conservation Commission members, who are volunteers, to require them to be there nightly to lock the gate. We just can't have that liability out there. If it was open one night, we could get in trouble for that from the homeowners association. When that came up, we continued to patrol even more and work on the areas, and we again requested all residents to call the police if anything happened in the park after hours, as we were doing previously. We got no calls, just to let you know. In July, the town received a follow-up letter from the Board of Directors threatening legal action to revoke the town's deeded access over their property, which means to walk over the roads to get to the park if we did not lock the gate. At that time, it was determined to comply with requests and lock the gate. We did not want to do that, but we cannot risk the legal action from the cooperative and lose the right to pass over their roads to get to the park. Again, the park is open, but it only can be accessed by foot at this time. You can park in the Bay Road parking lot until we rip it up to reconstruct it, or walk into town. And we are looking at other solutions, and we're trying to encourage the cooperative to work with us as well. We just had no choice that if we couldn't lose access to the park, and that's what they were threatening, that we, the road access would be removed, and we, and the attorney, and originally, we're like, well, we have an easement, and Town Attorney said they have a revoke, it's a revocable easement. And they have the right to do that, but they have to go to court. But we, we can't risk having that at this point in time, so that's why we've locked the gate. I've been, I can tell you, I've been getting a number of phone calls daily. And I, we don't want to do this, but I don't have another option at this point. If the, if the homeowners group is not going to cooperate and allow us to come up with another plan, or even say, you know what, we're sorry that wasn't locked that night, or come up with some way to say to report when it's not locked, I have to do it at this point. Because if not, we will lose complete access and we'll have a landlocked piece of land. So that's where we are. I'm hoping, I've contacted the Conservation Commission, asking them to reach out to see if the homeowners association, if they'd be willing. I've talked, you know, I talked to the Town Attorney again yesterday, because of, I, I'll tell you, for example, last Thursday, the Public Works Director, the Conservation Commission requested that the Public Works Directive try to put boulders further in, because we thought maybe that would actually present some of the issues. While he was in there doing the work during the day, their attorney would have led to our attorney and emailed complaining that the gate was open. That's what we're dealing with.
During the day?
During the day. So it's not just a situation where the gate is open for a small period of time. This is somebody who's watching and knew that we were in there doing work, and the gate was open. So that's, that's the situation we're in. I'm afraid if we leave it open one night on accident, that's going to trigger it. And I can't, again, I can't risk losing any access to that land. And it's frustrating, but it's, it's, we're over a barrel on this one, unless they want to work with us.
Counselor Weinstein.
I have a few comments. I think, and first of all, just to start, I think it's completely unreasonable of the homeowners to react in this way and not provide some sort of rationale, or calls to the police, or, or some evidence that it's an issue. So I just think publicly I didn't want to say that. And then I just had a few questions as to what, some things that we could do to possibly get better access, because I also think it's unreasonable for us to suggest people walk on Bay Road. It's like a half mile to the entrance of the park, and Bay Road is a, you know, it's not the, it's not the most pedestrian, pedestrian-friendly road that we have here in town. So it can be, I, you know, problematic if you've got, you know, you're walking your dogs, or you have young kids, or anything like that. So to get access to that area via Bay Road, I, I don't think that that's a great solution. So I did drive by last week, and I was wondering if we could back up the gate, so still keep it locked, but have like maybe a couple parking spaces at the entrance? Just because there's nowhere to park. I mean, like, you know, there's signs all on people's property, no parking, which I, I don't, I completely understand that. But I thought that might be one option, so that even if it's two parking spaces, I mean, I don't know how much use it gets on a regular basis. I don't know that we need.
I'll tell you, from the number of calls, a lot.
Yeah, well, I think people like access to it. It's a beautiful area, and it's a shame to have it blocked off from the public, which is what I think, which is where we're at at the moment, so. That's it.
Counselor Cast.
I'd like just a more explicit clarification of what happens if we lose that easement. What does it mean? For example, if someone walks through the park, if we don't have an easement?
Worst-case scenario is trespassing on private property, because that's not our, that's the, that's the cooperative's land.
And is that the only access, legal access at this time to that land?
Yes.
Just wanted to make sure everybody was clear on that.
Yes.
Okay.
That's if it's posted as private property, correct?
I'm sorry?
That's if it's posted as.
Correct. If the, if that easement is, is taking, taken away, then yes, it would be posted as private property.
Except by water.
We've considered a bridge, or, you know, we've thought about everything.
Or a ferry.
Yeah. Bring back keel boats going across.
The gondola, you know.
But.
Derram boats.
Yeah. That's where, yeah, it's frustrating, but I want to make sure the public knew. And I've been trying to get that message out. I'm gonna, it's in this week's news, email newsletter, exactly what I just read. And, you know, I, I don't have another answer at this point. I'll ask about moving the gate. I mean, at least we could try to get some, you know, the parking up front, but.
So it's, it is locked right now?
It is locked. And again, it, you know, I ask, because I, I've been here five years and it's never been an issue. So I asked the chief, when was the last time he remembers locking it? And he says it's well over ten years.
And can I, I'm sorry.
Yeah.
And the issue was that people, or supposedly that people were driving in and being disruptive?
Sometimes alcohol, parties and stuff in there. I don't believe there was any graffiti or vandalism. I think it was more like they were out there partying or whatever, but there was traffic at night. And, you know, one of the concerns was, well, was it the police crews at night making sure there weren't people in there? But yeah, that was the complaint that we were receiving. And some of it was speed also down on their street, so.
Counselor Cast.
What is the next step to work with the association?
You know, I'm gonna, I'm gonna ask our, since it's attorney to attorney, our attorney to contact theirs and see about moving the gate, if that's an option. I've also, you know, I would encourage people who know, people on the Heron Point Board to express how important it is to the community to be able to access that. And we've been trying to explain that, but it doesn't seem like it's getting through.
Conservation Commission also hopes to meet with their board to see if there's some, something we can work out, too. So all these concerns will hopefully be Conservation Commission and their housing board.
Counselor Bowden?
What happens if someone with an office just, saying in the mills, happened to see people in the park, walking around, or doing stuff during the day, what?
During the day, it's fine. It's open. It's open from dawn till dusk. You can see them at night.
But you can walk there.
You can walk there. It's foot access. It's still open.
Thank you.
Just can't bring a vehicle to that spot, park it right at this point.
Just for comments on the.
Yep. So my next item is an update on the LED, street lighting. I'm actually very happy to say that we're having, I had a meeting last week with EverSource, and I was notified that they were providing the town with twenty-four thousand, one hundred dollars rebate to switch our lights over to LED. our lights over to LED. I met, I was, I was meeting with them to discuss the downtown project, which the whole project is only $18,000, so I was kind of taken aback that they were going to give me a rebate for $24,000. What they were actually giving me a rebate for was to switch all of the streetlights, minus the decorative ones downtown. And they're going to give $24,100. Right now, we're estimating that total project at $57,000. So that would eat up almost half that project to switch it out. I have begun the application for CDFA, Community Development Finance Authority, for the loan to do the remainder of the project. And again, the cost, the way we pay for that is through the savings. So we pay the, the loan through that and we're estimating a payback of about two years. But I also was told that we will be receiving a rebate on the decorative lighting, which we didn't think we were going to get at first. It's about $7,000, so it is still a good amount of that $18,000. The number I have in my report, we're, we're off a little with Eversource, so we're discussing that a little bit more. But I just wanted to let the council know that it looks like we're going to be doing both projects and be able to get it done sometime late 2017, early 18. Now, next we're getting the proposals from three companies to see what the cost will be. So, I think somebody sent a button.
Oh, Counsel Bowden?
Well, what is, what are the estimate costs for cost savings and how do we?
We'll get to that. Yeah, we'll get, as soon as everything's wrapped up, we'll have a big presentation with everything in there.
As far as the energy costs, how do we come up with those cost savings? How do we know what the energy costs are for those?
They'll, they're, I mean, they'll figure out what the kilowatt savings are. And I, I'm not a scientist, I've got to wait for the presentation.
And nor am I.
Yeah, so.
Thank you.
Yep. As you're aware, close this one last thing, for some reason it's not that me, okay. As you're aware, on July 24th, we were notified upon passage of Senate Bill 38 that the legislator was, legislature was returning money back to municipalities specifically for road and infrastructure projects. We've received $154,378.12 in additional funds. Upon notice of the receipt, the Director of Public Works and I reviewed the streets that we could move forward in our road maintenance plan. We do have those roads before you tonight. And I'm asking, when we get to that point on the town council agenda, suspend the rules to act on it this evening so we can include it in our original Bell and Flynn estimate so they can, when they're in doing the other roads, they can do these as well. They're basically, for the public, when we get, when we get there as well, the downtown village roads of the Hill and Elm Street, that area, Elm Street, towards Town Hall. We're going to get most of those done in this process. And that's all I have time, Mr. Chair.
Okay. I'm going to mention while we're on that, because it's, it is actually the next meeting of the council will be a joint meeting with the school board, which I believe you have the incorrect date on, on this page two of your report.
What do we have?
August 31st, isn't it the 30th? It's Wednesday night, I thought?
My, I thought mine was the 30th, okay, that's fine.
Is it, wasn't it Wednesday night or am I?
Yeah, I couldn't remember if it was the school board night or the?
Wednesday night.
I'll, I'll double check, it's.
Yeah, I can do either one.
Yeah.
So, but I thought, I, I, did you have it written in?
I had Wednesday.
Okay, that's fine.
Yeah, I had that too.
Okay. I'll just make sure the school's on the same night then.
Yeah, we just make sure everybody's on the same page. And maybe, it wouldn't be a bad idea to send out an email on that, so.
Yep.
Okay. All right, do we have any committee report?
Oh, I'm sorry, Mr. Chair, I forgot, part of my report. Sorry. That is a presentation of the water and sewer build-out study that was conducted earlier this year. So I'll have the Director of Environmental Services kick it off. And you received that report a few weeks ago.
Thanks for having us. Tonight, Rick Davies is going to give a presentation from Wright Pierce, who performed the build-out study. Should be a short little presentation, questions?
Good, thank you. Let's see. So, I suspect after all the, all the major water and sewer project doing in town, you know as much about this as I do, so maybe if you come up with anything good, I'm willing to listen on that. The report, I think most people got a copy of the report, so hopefully got a chance to read some of it. There's a lot of numbers and the engineers love to hit tables and lots of tables, so this is definitely an executive summary concept just for, generally. But just to start out as an introduction, and again, this is, I'm speaking to the choir here, but, you know, the infrastructure is key to vibrant community. We all know that, that's why you put so much effort into your water and sewer. So you have a new wastewater treatment plant, you know, coming onboard right now. We've been involved with that one. You have a new drinking water source, so the obvious thing, hey, we're in good shape, right? And so that, that's what you would think. And I think in general, you're in the right place. But what this is really meant to look at is to, as you continue to plan for the future, as things change, as the community grows, zoning things, you know, how long are you good for going at the rate you're going right now? So that's, that really was the gist of this whole plan. So the goals, we basically update the water and wastewater flow analysis. I got a stack of books about this high that you've done them over the various years, so it's another, it's another update, but there are some new things that are happening in town. You have a new wastewater plant. We could look at different aspects of that, so we've looked at that. We complete the build-out analysis, which we'll explain. I'll review the wastewater plant and the water supply capacities and then discuss some strategies is the general gist of what this is for. We'll go through some of this pretty quick. So the water and wastewater flow analysis, basically, we, we use real numbers, your real usage, where your, what your demands are, what's going to the wastewater plant, your meter records, and we look at, we break it in different classes and come up with, okay, what, you know, where are you right now? We also look at water loss, because that's, you know, that's a big thing for communities. Basically, Newmarket has done actually pretty good with water loss. Like, we looked at about a 10-year period, if you remember the report, and you've continued to cut into your water loss. Basically, water loss, unaccounted for water, they give it lots of names, but it's, it's water you're not selling and so it's going somewhere. And it's dropped quite a bit over the years. I think the beginning of the 10-year period is about 29%, now you're down in the 10% range and so where. And you like to be under 15%. So you're really doing pretty good on water loss, that's a good thing. Your inflow and infiltration, if you're familiar with that concept, that's related to the sewer system, your sewer pipes, and how much extraneous water is getting into your system. That eventually gets to the wastewater plant and then yours, geez, I got to treat that, so it's taking capacity. So that's another one, which you've made some good headway over the years. I think you had highs in the past 10 years, almost 50, 50, over 50% of the water that went to the wastewater plant was actually extraneous. It wasn't water coming from the, from homes, it was leaking in, so forth. That came down quite a bit over the years. You can see some real lows during your dry periods, like, you know, the past couple of years, we've had really dry, you don't get as much in there. That's come down quite a bit. For our study, we came up, used some averages for the, for the planning for the future, because you're not always going to have a dry year. So that's what that's about, but the good news, that's come down. And then we look at peaking factors. And those are just, the reality of the peaking factor is you, you as a community have to meet peak flows, you can't just meet average flows, you know, when it's coming at you, you have to meet it. So you have to build that capacity in your plants and, and your water sources. So we looked at those again to say, are the peaking factors correct for this community the way you're run right now? So we, we do all of that and then that allows us to move on to looking at some other things. So the build-out analysis. Typical build-out analysis are, basically look at their 20-year projections and you, most of the time, the simple way it's done a lot, you look at population growth and you make some gross assumptions that, well, it's pretty much straight line. Well, if you're going to, if your population goes like this, our usage and demands will go like this. So it's a pretty good assumption and you look at population growth in various ways and have come up with those concepts. So that's what we use for the 20-year build-out analysis, how we come up with demands and water needs. The other thing we do, which is a little bit different about the way this was done compared to others, is we actually look at your, your present land area and your areas that are, you have water and sewer and how they're zoned. And we say, okay, if continuing on this track, if you built everything out, if every, for like, say you had a three-acre lot and you're allowed to have two acre, one, one-acre lots, what would happen if you built all that out? So we, basically that's a saturation bit out. It doesn't really mean anything, except that it gives you some idea of, okay, where would we be if we actually, everything grew the way we think it did and everything went along with the zoning? And you'll see why that's kind of important, because it sets the tone. But what I want people to know is that you look at the report, that number is, it's, it's not a real number, but it's a number to help guide you and say, well, what would happen in our present, the way we're zoned right now? So it's a fun number to look at, but I don't think anybody would bet much that that's the way it's really going to happen. So we did look at impacts the way you're presently zoned. And again, it's another point, that this is not a zoning study or telling you how to zone things, but it is trying to explain that the way you're presently, the way you're, didn't work very good. The way you're presently zoned here, we look at that and see, well, if something changed, let's say you wanted to change that area to the upper left, which is now an industrial zone, if that became something else, a, there's been some discussions about healthcare, extended care facilities. If you change that zoning to something else, how would that impact your needs? And, and that's what this is supposed to do. It's kind of a sensitivity analysis to say, well, how does zoning impact me? It's not telling you how to zone, it's not, it's not doing that, but it's just saying this is the way it is right now. So that's, that's the, that's the purpose of looking at these. So we, we looked at, we, our basic study looked at the present sewer and water service area. We said we're not, except for the planned, potential planned expansions, we're not going to go out to all the residential, it doesn't make a lot of sense to, it costs too much to get out there. We looked at a few zoning changes from talking to the planning board and listening to, reading some of your reports about what if you did some zoning changes? We looked at that and then we looked at maybe a couple of little expansions, if you're trying to do some sewer, you know, try to get some septic systems from contaminating the bay or something, I guess. We looked at a couple minor things like that. But basically, that, we didn't do much more than that. This one really wasn't, it's in the report, it wasn't really meant to look at. But this is, this is an example of changes that if you made some zoning changes, you changed some industrial or some other type of zoning, how would that reduce your water and sewer demands? And it's in the report, but the bottom lines there say, well, if you, pretty obvious, the way, the way industrial, the way we look at industrial and the amount of water and sewer needed versus a healthcare facility or an extended care facility, it drops dramatically in the, in the, so the report basically says, you know, you can get a little farther without having to do more expansions and need more water and sewer, is really what that does. So the, the wastewater treatment facility, which is the one that's being constructed right now as we speak, luckily, we went through that and didn't find out we had a whole bunch of errors, so that's good news. So we looked, again, the same things that we looked at when we built, you know, the plant was being built, you know, we look at flows, we look at spolids, and of course, you built for nitrogen removals, which you're really built for. We looked at that, extended out 20 years and said, okay, this, based on the new numbers we just did, does this still look good? And basically, yes, it looks, it looks good. You're not going to, you know, going on the 20-year projections you have right now unless you bring in a beer and bottling facility and all of a sudden they really dump on you. But in the projections right now, you're good for the 20-year horizon. Now, if you get to the saturation, which is everything got built out the way it's zoned right now, no, you've got some problems. The, the key thing to note on this one is that, yes, you're, you're good, but if you decide that you want to take on a neighbor, you want to take, you don't have huge amounts of excess capacity. So that has to be kept in mind as you move forward and think about, well, how do you want to use this precious resource? So it is a, it's value, it's a valuable resource, that's worth a lot of money to you, so you want to make sure you use it wisely. And that's, that's really the outcome of the, of the wastewater side of it. So that, that, not much more to talk about that one. We probably spent more of our time talking about the water supplies, where we spent our time. Partly, as you know, your Bennett Sewell wells themselves with the two or three years of, you know, drought, we looked at the, we looked at the safe yield analysis, with the safe yield of what those were. One of the things over the years, when those were first built, they, they had, you know, on the order of, you know, almost 300 gallons per minute safe yield. A safe yield is what can you pump continuously in a dry year? In a wet year, it's not the same, but in a dry year, that's what you're looking at. When we looked at your, your, the Bennett Sewell wells in particular over your past dry years, we dropped that safe yield, but we considered a safe yield for those wells from in the 220 to 300 range down to more of the 100 to 150 range. So the safe yield in a dry year has gone down. That doesn't mean Sean can't go out today and pump it at 300 gallons a minute, but eventually those things will drop and they pretty much show that type of response. They, they're not as strong as they once were, something's changed out there. You know, the other good news, since the McIntosh well is online, it's relieved those a little bit, so that's, that's a good thing too. McIntosh was a, was a good idea. The McIntosh well, on the other hand, has a, you could pump the thing, it has a, a safe yield of like 300, but because it has to be mixed with Bennett and Sewell in order to be used, because that was one of the requirements, because of the, the quality of that water, you'll, you'll see in my next thing that it, it really isn't, you can't, it's not, you can't add Bennett, Sewell and McIntosh because it doesn't work that way, because you need, it's, you have some blending going on, you need other wells to blend it. So when you get to some of the criteria of are you in good shape, not in all conditions, and I'll, we'll talk about that. The other, the other issues going on with McIntosh right now, now it's been online for six or eight months. It, it's, it's a blending facility, but it's not easy to operate. It's, it's a tough system to operate because a typical blending facility that we've been involved with, you, you would typically have a well and if, and if it had, let's say it had high arsenic for discussion. So you'd have one well and you may treat part of that water and you may, you may not treat, and you would, and you would have a blended facility, but it's, it's really easy to operate because it's all in one location. This one, because of the hydraulics of the system, you're really taking water from one side of the system, Bennett Sewell, and trying to operate it and get it to operate here, so the valves have to work right. There's a lot of knowledge to that. So the, the end result is it works, it was, it was definitely a good idea to get, get over what you need to, but one of the outcomes, if anybody asks me, will be, it's really not a, a good long-term solution for the community to try to operate like that. And we'll, we'll show you why in a little bit more. So this, I think this is the main thing and just, maybe you can't read it, this, this is in the, this is in the report, but I figured I'd at least bring one so you can kind of look at it.
Thanks.
So what, what this is trying to show, which I quickly went through my whole discussions about demands and maximum day demands and how we got to this. So on the far left there, what you'll see is the current, the current demands, the average day demands and the maximum day demands. What, what you typically look at as good practice is you want to be able to meet your average day demand with your, with your water source. So your average day demand, you want to be able to meet it. So when you look across that top line, which is current demand, and it shows what the average day demand is, around 380,000 gallons a day, if all your wells are online, you can meet that. So that's good. That's a good thing. And with, if the, with, without the Bennett, you can meet it, but because, because of the, the need for blending, if you take, if Sewell goes down for some reason, because you need that water to blend with McIntosh, then you can't, you can't meet your, you can't meet your average day demand anymore, because you can only really get about 300,000 gallons a day if Sewell comes offline for some reason, whatever that might be. So this is a little different than most communities because, because of this blending requirement. The other, the other piece of this, we call it condition two, is that you need, you really need to meet your maximum day demand with your largest, in this case, largest pump or largest well out of service. So in this case, staying with current demands again, you see the maximum day demand, based on all the numbers we crunched, was around 575,000 gallons a day is your max day demand. If you, and McIntosh is your biggest source right now, if McIntosh goes down, you can't meet your maximum day demand. So using that criteria, you would say, okay, well, we need to, we need to look at this. It's not biting us tomorrow, you know, because obviously we're getting by, but we do need to start looking at how, what is our long-term solution to try to meet some of these basic criterias? The state of New Hampshire, if, if something happens for a long time, they'll, they'll come after you if you can't meet these conditions. It's not like in, like your wastewater plant, where EPA came and said, do this or we're fining you tomorrow. It's, it's a much more friendly type thing, but that type of requirement is still there if you get into a situation, you can't meet these. Some states actually make these a, a real, more of a, more of a law. This is more recommendations, what we're talking about right here.[1795.33] in what we're talking about right here, but it does set the tone there. So that was the first line, that's current day. If you do the same, look at the same build-out, you look at 2037, and now you see our average day demands have gone up to almost half a million, our max days are almost up to 900, and you look back across the safe yield adequacy, with all the wells online, you can, but now, if you lose, if you lose Bennett or Sewell, you can't meet it, and then with, and then that safe pumping condition still isn't met, and it gets worse with the, the scenario build-outs are the, are basically, those are saturation build-outs, a couple of different scenarios, but, but it gets worse in those circumstances. So that's, that's kind of in a nutshell, that table pretty much tells where you're at right now for, for that, and we can, you can ask a question now, I can wait till later, I only got one, two more slides anyway, so. So.
Counsel Bowden has a question.
Go ahead.
How do you come up with the numbers for the increase for 2037, going from 378 to 513, an average demand, and then the max, 575 to 924?
So how do you go from average to maximum, or how do you go from today to 2037?
How do you get them from today to 2037?
So the average day demands are like, we did population growth, again, looking at population and, and that, and the, and the max day demands, basically, we went through and looked at all those peaking factors to see what you're doing now and how the peaks come out, and so we, we use peaking factors, say, "Okay, you're going to go from your average, you're going to have these types of peaks," because we're assuming the peaking factors will stay similar, as far as how you, how you work. So, you know, I always, like, peaking factors, I always talk about, you know, the Super Bowl at halftime, everybody goes in and flush their toilets at the same time, or you have these big days that, so that, that's where the peaking factors come in, from a, you know, a realistic point of view. And it's definitely better explained in the report than I'm doing right now, and I'm not giving any of these things justice, but most of that's in there and how we, how we got there. So, again, strategies for water management, you know, there's, going with the assumption that, yes, you know, we need to start looking about this for the future, you know, new source, you guys have already made an investment for potential new source, Tucker, which is good, that's well done, you know, water's precious. The thing with Tucker, just like McIntosh, it needs treatment, though. So the second bullet is here, is that, in my mind, treatment is in your future, because your, your two water sources, your two primary, biggest water sources, both need treatment of one sort or another, and they're a little bit different, they're, they both have a little manganese issues, one has the chloride issue, which is basically salt, one has an arsenic issue, so one way or another, they need, they need treatment to take full advantage of that safe yield for the future. So the, the recommendation would be, you really, you don't need to necessarily do it tomorrow, but you really should start thinking about that concept, what are the real costs to do it, are the treatment technologies right, what does that really look like in today's, in today's world? So that's kind of, that's my recommendation. And then, of course, the other one is demand management, which is an interesting one. One of the communities we're working with, it's actually a very large utility down in Connecticut, they've had ongoing water restrictions, similar to what you've had, and they basically are getting the state legislature to pass that, they're not, those aren't just, they're forever, they're, we're staying with mandatory water restrictions, that's where we're going with this thing. I'm looking, I'm going, "Oh, okay, well, that's what you do," I mean, it's all about client service and how you want to deal with it, but it's interesting that some people said, "We're going that route, and we're not going to, they're going to be permanent, they're not, we're just not going to do it during droughts." I'm not recommending that either, I'm just passing along information about ways some people are handling these, these ideas. So I thought that, I thought that was kind of interesting, that people are actually going to that point with that. And then the wastewater management, again, we talked about that, you meet the 2037, you're not going to go much beyond that, so, you know, continuing with your INI reduction program, which you have been working on, that's, that's a good strategy. And then, you know, you have your demand management, which, you know, you could make some of the same case for, on the wastewater side, because that comes down, the water comes down to wastewater plant eventually anyways, you could do some of those same strategies there. Again, I think there's, you know, two or three or four pages of direct recommendations and stuff in the report, but for the highlights, this is where we're at, right here. So I think that, well, I know, I know that's all I have, but, but questions if you want, it was, it was a lot, and I know there's a lot in the report, but if you have any questions that you, if I can't answer them, I'll get back to you with answers.
So it's a, I don't think I'm prepared to really fully understand it, there's a lot to digest when I look through it, but it, it sounds like, should we face a situation where neighbors did want to send some of their effluent our way for this, for the sewer plant, there could be some need on the part of the council or the community to understand what our future demand might be, and, because at that point, we could run into some kind of constraint on how much, on having adequate capacity.
There's a lot more to it to that, there's a lot more discussion, because there's discussions with the EPAs of shifting flows from one watershed to another, again, credit for that. So there are potentials to increase our capacity.
Okay.
So there's other, there's more to that section of the wastewater.
And do they consider at that time, just not, do they consider, is there, if you, let's say you took all the effluent from one river, that now you have effluent going through two river systems, and all of it comes over to one river, is there, did that have an, the bay, effect on the bay is the same, is there any impact on the lower river from having?
That's why there have to be discussions and how that is all done, and we've already entered into some of those discussions with the EPA. So it's a little bit more complex than when you take on another town. They are all for you taking on other towns because they want to start to combine systems. So it's, it's an interesting process that we'd have to go through.
Yeah, just, I'm really more of a drinking water person than a wastewater, but I, I touch on this in a while, but I, but just to add, there's, there's the quantity issue, which is really, if you look at the report, you're really going to be up against the allowable flow out of the wastewater plant, that, you're up against that just because you continue to grow and put more water down, there's, there's a hydraulic, but then there's the quality issue, and that is something that, there's ways to get higher quality water so you can take on more flow, because there's a, it's not just, it's not just quantity, there's also quality, too.
So what he's saying is, we, if we doubled our flow, we'd have to cut our limits in half, so in other words, treat it to a better quality.
So the net effect environmentally would remain the same.
Right, right.
So there's other ways to skin that.
Any other questions? Thank you very much.
Okay, yeah, yeah, thanks for having me, I'm sorry, threw a lot at you.
Would be a good basis for further discussions, I appreciate that. Okay. Are there any committee reports? Counsel Finch?
The Conservation Commission met on August 10th, so last week. I'll be brief, because there are some redundancies, but we did get a report back from the planning board, that we did get a technical assistance grant to help us update our stormwater regulations. It's going to be about a six-month project in combination with Setting Sail, which is affiliated with UNH, so we discussed that briefly. We spent a lot of time on Schottmeyer Park and the progress down there, we approved the sign that will be installed in the near future. If you've driven by, you see all the granite posts have been installed going down that road. We looked at a couple, or we looked at one detailed landscaping plan for some landscaping at the entranceway, and kind of discussed some possibilities for how to maintain that and how to give handicap-friendly access from the parking lot there, but those are still all in discussion, obviously. And then we talked about future maintenance of any gardens that might exist there, we talked about Shenanah Park, which they have installed some safety fencing up there, because obviously, there's some erosion, and we mentioned kind of looking into how we could shore up some of that, the edging there, whether it be riprap or whatnot, and we also mentioned the possibility of what would happen to the boat ramp with some improvements to make sure that the footprint of the park stays the same. And then we also discussed Heron Point, but that's stuff that we kind of mentioned earlier during this meeting, so that's kind of the quick rundown.
Thank you. Counselor Burns?
Planning Board met last Tuesday, August 8th. We approved or an alternate Michael Zahorek to the planning board, and then we had a work session, which was the discussion of the new overlay district on New Road, that is set for a public hearing on September 12th. Some of the discussion points that came up was with a number of these facilities going up in and around the seacoast, there is a high demand for medical employees with, like an RN status or that level of care status that's required, and there's, there's high demand and there's not a very high supply. So that's one thing that was brought up. Also, they talked about the traffic over there, and specifically, the bridge.
You say, "They," who?
Well, it was brought, you know, it was brought up by public members, and then there was discussion. So, so the bridge was brought up, and, and with, and Gary Levy was there, actually, and he, he brought up a good point with, he had talked to some other facilities about supply trucks, you know, for laundry or food, and specifically, the food service truck, I'm trying to remember how large he had said it was, but the size of the truck wouldn't be able to go over the bridge, they'd have to go the other way. So there's that kind of thing to think about. And then it was also, the other thought on that was just, with all these other options that are coming in with different care, you know, you can, there's lots of companies out there that do in-home care, even for Alzheimer's, and with all the different facilities around, just the longevity of a facility like that and that type of thing. So lots of things to see what comes out at the public hearing and see what people have to say about that, so. Good, good discussion points, really. At the end of the meeting, one of the planning board members, and I'm sorry I didn't get a chance with traveling and everything to discuss this with you, Steve, but one of the planning board's members did bring up something about the boat ramp, it's Shonda, seeing if it could be somehow looked at to get redone.
We are looking at it.
Okay. And I had asked if they had talked to you, but I said I would bring it up, too.
Yeah.
And then Heron Point came up as well, but we've already talked about that.
Interesting for a planning board meeting to have those topics.
Yes, well, yes. Yep. So, that's it.
Counsel Weinstein?
I just had a question, actually, for Counselor Finch, and do you know, is the Schottmeyer Park open at this point? Can the public access it, or?
I think it can be accessed, but I don't think it would be considered open just yet, because if you look at, obviously, the road going in with, the post had been up, I think there's still a lot more work that needs to be done, but I'm not exactly sure on the status of whether it's open or not.
Thank you.
I think that's all the reports, so we move on to the Resolution 27, 2018-01, authorization to purchase a 2017 Ford F-250 pickup for the sewer department and withdraw said funds from the previously established sewer capital reserve fund. Go ahead, Sean.
Need a motion?
Need a motion, excuse me.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Counsel Weinstein, second by Counsel Burns.
Thanks for having me tonight. We have a truck that was actually purchased in 2004, it's ordered, so we received it 2005 at that point in time. In 2004, the truck is used by the sewer department for the, by the lab to grab samples and to deliver samples to the lab. It's also used by other sewer operators to go around and check pumping stations and do, also, we get calls out for sewer plugs and to do those kind of works out in the sewer system. Trucks are normally kept for 12 years, however, we try and keep them a little bit longer. This one, we've had for over 12 years. Every year after the 12th year, we try and do an evaluation of the truck to see if we can keep it another year, however, this truck was sent over to Auto Excellence, they looked it over and said that it's time for it to go. So he estimated that it would cost roughly around $9,000 to bring it up to par, and he says it's not worth putting money into it. I went to Gropone Ford, which has a state bid, according to our purchasing policy, and they gave me a quote for $28,978 for a new truck. So we've been saving for this truck for the past 12 years or 13 years, and the money is in the CIP. So I'm looking for permission to, or authorization to withdraw the money from CIP and purchase a new vehicle.
Any questions or comments? Counsel Cast?
Just procedurally, excuse me, you said you went to Gropone, right?
There, the state bid, and according to our purchasing policy, state bid qualifies as doing a bid process, so we don't have to go to any place else.
Great, thank you.
I think I saw her on there, it, it's not a lot of miles, was it, on the vehicle? I know it's years when.
There's like 55,000 miles on it. It's getting more use now because our, we're getting a bigger workforce and we're out, starting to do more in the system, so it's getting used quite regularly, and it definitely hurts when we go down one truck, we cannot do nearly as much work. So, the biggest thing is hours on those things, because we're out in the system and you're not going, it's not a very big town, so you can get around it a lot, in quite a few times and not put a lot of miles on it.
So it's, it's a little bit like sometimes a cruiser, where you have a lot of hours sort of idling somewhere?
Yes, yeah.
Okay, I see no other questions, want to call a roll?
Counsel Burns?
Aye.
Counsel Finch?
Aye.
Counsel Cast?
Aye.
Counsel Bowden?
Aye.
Counsel Weinstein?
Aye.
Counsel Pike?
Aye.
Motion passes 6-0.
Okay, next up is Resolution 2718-02, Creation of an Energy and Environment Advisory Commission. And Counselor Weinstein or Cast should address this point, it says here.
Need a motion before you can discuss it.
First out of the motion.
So moved.
Motion by Counsel Weinstein, second by Counsel Bowden.
I'm happy to talk a little bit about it, I know we talked about it a few meetings ago. This came about after being approached by a few different members of the community on different issues. So someone talked to me about composting, another person talked about having a solar array, you know, and looking into those possibilities for the community. Another item that was brought up was having electric car plug-ins, and so I think that there are a lot of issues involved, obviously, there's cost, and there's the benefit to the community and the will of the community to participate in projects like that. So I had talked to Steve, or to the town administrator, about putting together a advisory committee to look into all of those issues, and Counselor Cast also. We both talked to Steve about that, and this was the process that we came up with, a member of the town council, a member of the Conservation Commission, a member of the planning board, and then four members at large. I know that we've had groups like this in the past, I think quite a while, well, I don't know how many years ago, there was a group that looked into energy efficiency in the town, and it was disbanded because there wasn't a whole lot of interest, and, you know, I don't know what the interest level will be in the community once we put this forward. I, it's hard to get people to volunteer, but there seems to be an appetite for it, and I'm certainly hopeful that people will step up and be a part of this, because I think it's important for the community, important for the environment. it's important for the community, important for the environment. And that's it. I don't know if you wanted to add anything?
Yeah, I think maybe it's timely to bring that idea back again and give the community an opportunity to drive that forward from that, from that level, so.
And I, I wanna also comment that, you know, I know that there are a lot of communities that have taken a stand regarding the Paris Accords, seacoast communities and communities throughout New Hampshire. I don't know that there's an appetite for us to do that in New Market, but I think that this is one way for us to be environmentally responsible. So, at least to explore our options.
Would there be anybody from the, are you envisioning anybody from the administration? Is anybody from the administration would sit in on this regularly, or is it sort of?
I think we'd go when needed, because there may be different departments when needed. It could be water and sewer at one point, it could be built facilities, it could be public work, so I think it'd be depending on the topic of discussion.
And, and is, it says energy, so it's, it's not just, it's not only energy in the situation of, I mean, is this, does this have anything to say with heating oil purchasing or anything?
No.
Okay.
That's, that's, it would be, say if the committee wanted to advise us to go to solar, that would be it, but they're not gonna get involved in the bidding and purchasing of oil or, or utilities.
Well, I, what I was thinking of was at one time, I remember whether all of us talked about combined natural gas with the, remember in the previous school proposal, some of those things, so.
Yeah, I mean, that could be something they look into, but it's, yeah.
Okay, I have no other comments. Run the roll, please.
Counsel Burns.
Aye.
Counsel Finch.
Aye.
Counsel Cast.
Aye.
Counsel Bowden.
Aye.
Counsel Weinstein.
Aye.
Counsel Pike.
Aye.
Motion passes 6-0.
We will advertise and ask the other two committees, the three boards, to appoint an individual to serve on it.
Next up is Resolution 27-18-04. Well, we already did the cable franchise agreement, so I take that back. And this next one's an item laid on the table, so we're-
No, you missed the bond.
Sorry. Right there.
Yeah.
Okay, 27-2018-03, issuing 10.34 million in bonds and notes for the wastewater treatment facility upgrade. Could I have a motion to approve that resolution?
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Counsel Burns, second by Counsel Finch. I can discuss to start with. This is a, pretty much clerical action. As you know, that the town authorized the town to issue bonds in 2013 in the amount of 4.1 million dollars, foot four, 14.1 million dollars, to reconstruct the wastewater plant. We took that loan out of the state revolving fund at that point, where they had loan forgiveness of about $4 million. This is now taking money from the rural development in the form of a bond, and will pay off that amount, and the $10 million remaining in our debt will now be with the rural development. We planned on that from day one. It was the best way to get the most funds out of this. I am asking for a friendly amendment. If there's no objection on the second, there, now there, or be, or the first, now there, if we be resolved where there's a blank, that the bonds be dated August 21st, 2017. We can just do that clerically, if there's no objection. We just need to make sure the date that we're gonna issue the bonds.
Should we need a motion for the?
No, as long as the council doesn't object to us adding that, we can just add that.
I see no objection. Okay, could we have a motion to approve, please?
Here, you got that.
Already got that. Call the roll.
Counsel Burns.
Aye.
Counsel Finch.
Aye.
Counsel Cast.
Aye.
Counsel Bowden.
Aye.
Counsel Weinstein.
Aye.
Counsel Pike.
Aye.
Motion passes 6-0.
Okay, so now it's on to resolutions ordinancees in the first reading. We have a motion, for the first one, we're gonna ask for a motion to suspend the rules so that we can act on this this evening. That is Resolution 2017-18-05, Resolution Amending the Bell &amp; Flynn Road Paving Contract. So do we start with a motion to suspend the rules?
Yep.
I think that was-
A second.
Counselor Cast and then made the motion, and Counsel Weinstein, second. Any?
I think it's pretty self-explanatory. We, as I said, we had that extra money. We wanted to try to get the most bang for the buck, so there was, there was, I'm trying to remember the road now. Bald Hill was above these streets, however, the cost is actually a reconstruction. It would be too costly to do that, so we looked at doing these streets instead.
Okay. Counsel Cast?
When you say above, it's because, just to clarify, it's because we have sort of a, a list that we're gonna do things in a certain order.
Yes, yes.
Right?
Like, for example, New Road Phase Two is actually above all of these on the list, but that's probably in the 400,000 to 500,000 dollar range because of drainage. We couldn't do that with these funds. Bald Hill is a complete reconstruction, which would be in the $200,000 range. We don't have that in this one either. So to just reclaim and do the downtown streets, it'd come in about $153,000 estimated, and that's just gonna get rolled into the, the projects that we're already doing with Bell &amp; Flynn.
Normally, we don't move things ahead of other things.
No, we do. We do.
We do?
We do. If there is a, you know, say if one year we can get, one, we have $300,000, and the bid comes in at 275, we'll move something that's smaller above something that's bigger so we can just use all that, those funds in that year. It just depends on the size of the projects.
But I guess what I mean is, you drop down to the next one that will fit to move it up?
Yeah, absolutely.
You won't drop further down.
Unless there's a reason why it should be moved, like there's some failures that happened since the study, or, you know, there's a project that's coming up that we wanna tie in with it. Say if there was a sewer project on one, we'd tie it together, but we don't move them around for any other reason except, because this is the fair way to do it. So you don't say so-and-so's road got over my road, or that's the reason why. This has been a, a study done by UNH, and this is the sequence that they recommend.
Counsel Weinstein?
We had gotten some complaints or feedback, I guess, about a road in the downtown area recently, and I can't, is that one of these?
Yeah, it's, I believe it's Church and Granite were the ones.
Okay, good.
Yeah, since I didn't read these all before, I probably at this point, I'll just read the, the names of the streets that are involved with this. There's Elm Street, Spring Street, Pine Street, Central Street, Church Street, Granite Street, and Elm Court.
Actually, I just, procedurally, we shouldn't have been discussing, I first need to vote on suspending the rules to-
Okay.
To act on it.
You just didn't make a motion.
Okay, could we have a motion to approve, please? I'm good on procedure tonight, I'll tell you. Second.
Now you can discuss.
Counsel Burns, the second by Counsel Bowden.
So this is for $153,000 of the, we received $154,378.12, Counsel Weinstein?
I just wanted to make a comment that, you know, we put a lot of effort into our road plan, and any extra funds that we have that lets us move it forward more quickly is, you know, so incredibly helpful, so I'm grateful that we have this money to be able to improve the infrastructure in, in town, so I just, that's it.
Okay. I see no other questions or comments. Shall we make the vote?
Counsel Burns.
Aye.
Counsel Finch.
Aye.
Counsel Cast.
Aye.
Counsel Bowden.
Aye.
Counsel Weinstein.
Aye.
Counsel Pike.
Aye.
Motion passes 6-0.
All right, and now the rest of these are in the first reading for later action. Resolution 27-18-17-18-06, Purchase of a Mack Roll-Off Truck, the current Mack, whereas the current Mack roll-off truck for the transfer station is 24 years old and recommended for replacements this year, and whereas the town's mechanic recommends its replacement, and whereas the town received four proposals for replacement with the proposal from McDevitt Trucks for $165,237 after trade, now therefore be it resolved, it's a Newmarket Town Council that, that the town council authorized the town administrator enter into an agreement with McDevitt Trucks to purchase a 2017 Mack GU713 roll-off truck and withdraw said funds from the previously established Public Works Campaign Reserve Fund. And what is a roll-off truck?
Those big trucks that take all the materials out of the transfer station and bring it to-
Yeah, I had to Google it.
Okay, and on to the next one. Resolution 27-18-07, Purchase of a Zodiac Rescue Boat, whereas current boat used by the Fire and Rescue Department is not considered safe for operations, and whereas the town received three proposals for replacement Zodiac Rescue Boat with the lowest proposal from Industrial Protection Services for $19,550, now therefore be it resolved at the Newmarket Town Council that the town council authorized the town administrator to enter into an agreement with Industrial Protection Services to purchase a 2017 Zodiac Mil-Pro ERB400 rescue boat and withdraw $19,550 from the previously established Fire Rescue Capital Reserve Fund. And I think that's the last thing on our agenda, except for closing comments, our correspondence to the town council administrator, I guess? Nope. No, I'm sorry, Counselor Burns.
Just wanted to put a reminder out there that this Newmarket Splash and Dash is this Saturday down at Shonda Park. I believe 10:30 registration opens. I'll be there.
Counsel Weinstein?
That was a great event last year, too, so I just had a question about the boat. Would it be possible to get some data on how often we have calls that would require water rescue, and, and just how, how much we would need?
Okay.
We would use some, or have used something, the current boat, I guess.
Yeah, yeah, sort of along those lines, something explained. I mean, the boat looks like it's in fine shape, so when they say it's not safe, it's because it's inadequate size? Is that what is meant by that?
Well, the fire chief will be here, so, he wasn't planning on being here this evening, so.
Yeah, that's fine. And are there, if there are no other closing comments by town councillors, the next council meeting is September 6th, not counting August 30, when we have a joint meeting with the school board, and as seeing no other lights, I think we stand adjourned.